Good evening, I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls, City Council meeting to order.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Gallups?
Here.
Holst?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Madsen?
Here.
Shobloom?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson?
Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, August the 18th City Council meeting. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
A second.
Have a motion by Merle and a second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carries. That moves us on to public input this evening, which is citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes and please limit your comments to three minutes. And as there is no one here this evening, we are moving on. That moves us on to Item 6 on the agenda this evening, public hearings, Resolution 2144 certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes. Linnell?
Thank you Mayor. This is the quarterly time, I guess, that we do certify the unpaid utility charges to the property taxes. It is done quarterly to allow for hopefully better collection of utility bills, which we have seen that over the years. So anyway, this is the public hearing for input to allow them to make a case for that or against it, but there is a note that I would like to comment. However, on the list, there is a large dollar amount that you may have noticed and that has been paid.
Okay, so basically that drops that down, drops it down about fifteen thousand there, so.
Right.
So that's, that's a lot better than we've seen in the past, so.
Right.
Okay.
That's good.
Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to address the council in the public hearing? Is there anyone wishing to address the council at the public hearing? Seeing as there is no one here to address the council, at this time, we will close the public hearing and the Chair will take a motion to adopt Resolution 2144 certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes.
I will second that.
Have a motion by Merle, second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carries. Moves us on to Item 7, the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may, issues are not on the agenda, excuse me, items on this area of the agenda may be adopted or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For those folks at home, I will read the consent agenda. Item A is suggesting correct claims for the accounting period ending August the 13th, 2015. Item B are the meeting minutes for the August 4th, 2015 City Council meeting. Item C are the meeting minutes for the August 4th, 2015 City Council work session. Item D is to approve selection process to hire police officer. Item E, hire unscheduled part-time EMT employees. And item F, police supervisor hire. I would like to bring down item D and, and item F. We'll make item D the Item 8A. Under council business, the police supervisor hire will be Item 8B and the comp study will move down to HC. So are there any other issues that anybody would like to bring down? Seeing if there is none, the Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items D and F.
Some of.
Second.
Have a motion by Merle and a second by Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carries. Moves us on to council business. And Item 8A is going to be the approval, the approved selection process to hire the police officer. The one reason I wanted to bring down this is I'd like to get the council approval that when Jeff starts this process, he doesn't have to come back to us for anything until he has the new officer selected, that he wants to present to us for hire. With the officer departing and the shortage that it will generate with scheduling purposes with, yeah, we got football season coming up, so you're gonna have people coming to town at night. It's gonna take more officers to patrol different things. We don't really want to put a strain on the force, so I think at this point, so he can get the person in and get him trained, he needs to, to keep the ball rolling as fast as possible.
Do we, Jeff, will we be receiving shortly the official letter from Officer Sullivan?
I expect we should have it probably sometime close to the end of the month, first week in, in September. Talked with the commander at the sheriff's office today and they're moving forward in their process. They're to the background, psych, you know, all that stuff. So it's just a matter of coordinating all of that before they can make their offer move from conditional to final. And once they get that done, then I would expect that, you know, he would be tendering his resignation. Now, I, I really appreciate the, the direction the mayor's going. You know, it certainly allows me to move forward a little, a little faster without having those stop points of, of coming back to console. Should, you know, Officer Sullivan not move through that process, you know, where they withdraw their offer, you know, we won't be really out anything getting this ball rolling before then.
Any further discussion? The Chair will take a motion to approve the selection process for the hire with, to replace the officer that is tendering his resignation and that he does not have to bring that person back until such time as he's made a selection.
I will, I will second that.
Have a motion by Merle and a second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Carries. And that moves us on to Item 8B, which is the police supervisor hire. That was pulled down. We are looking to table that after discussion with Ron and further investigation into where this person would fall out on the pay scale. It's been determined that we need to do some more review before we go out for this position, so I'm looking to get a recommendation to table this until that is done.
I will make, oh, okay. A second.
Any further discussion on the table of this? Okay. He's slowing down, you know how he gets. That moves us on to Item HC, the compensation study, final report. This, we're gonna have Ann Antinson from Springstead will be giving us the results of the employee compensation study. As our pay study scale compares with the market, it was more of a market type study. She's gonna give us a recommendation and then the Personnel Committee will let you know what our recommendation is after all of this. And we will move on from there. Didn't we?
We just got the second, we didn't vote on it.
Okay, all those in favor? I thought we did. We'll table it, we really don't have to vote on it.
Okay.
Ron?
Well, back, the council had, had commissioned this project, actually approved this project quite some time ago. And we're just, for a lot of, a lot of reasons, we're bringing this forward tonight. The Springstead was hired to do the compensation study. Just, all it is, is a market study. It was not a thorough compensation review, compensation study review. We did not look at position descriptions, new position descriptions weren't drafted. No review was done with employees as such themselves. It was only a market rate study and that's, that's what you'll see in front of you tonight. And I can go into maybe some of the issues, or maybe I won't, that we've seen with this, the current pay study and trying to work with it. But part of the problem is that it's a, the system that the city's used for several years is the state job match system. And I think I would like Ann to kind of briefly explain that tonight and the difficulties that lie in using that as a compensation system. But she has the results, she's gonna go through the report, there's a lot of numbers and she can hopefully make those a little more understandable. And thank you for being here, Ann.
My pleasure. Good evening, Mayor, council members. You have in front of you kind of a compensation study report and attached to the back of that is a large spreadsheet with a lot of numbers on it. So I'll just give you kind of an overview of the project and then we'll go over kind of some of the results and then discuss some of the difficulties that, that Ron has mentioned in moving forward with kind of recommendations for the overall compensation program. As Ron said, we, Springstead started this project, we talked about it last fall and based on, you know, kind of what was going on in the city and what was going on with Springstead, we decided to wait to move forward until 2015 so that we had the most current wage information for review by the city. So what we collected was based on 2015 wages for those that had made changes to their compensation plan at that time. So what we did with, with this study is we sat down and we selected communities in conjunction with discussions with Ron to kind of look at organizations that would be deemed comparable to the city of Cannon Falls. And we actually started out with a larger group than what you see in the study summary. Typically, what we look at for selection of kind of a group to do comparison of wages is looking at the size of your organization, looking at geographic locations, so who are your neighboring communities, looking at organizational structure and service provision, looking at competition for employees. So there's a lot of factors that went into the selection of the, the larger group that we first contacted and gathered information from. The city does provide some unique services that we don't necessarily see in other communities, such as the ambulance service, such as library and some of those. So we started out with a larger group to see if we could obtain additional information on some of those positions that are unique to the city of Cannon Falls. So we started out with a larger group and then when we gathered the data, we started to narrow it down. So we created a group of communities that was really more relevant to the city of Cannon Falls for comparison of, of the salaries. And that group is the 21 communities that you see listed on page one of, of the final report that we've given you as a part of this. So we had those 21 communities, the ones that you see identified in bold print are the ones that we were actually able to collect information from, either from them directly responding to the survey that was submitted on behalf of the city, from some other surveys that we had done for other communities. So we pulled in that data rather than asking them for the same information again and then also supplementing that data with information provided to the League of Minnesota Cities in their annual survey. Those that you don't see colored in bold are ones that we were unable to gather their information by any means despite multiple communications on, on, by us. Ron, I think you made some contacts as a part of this as well, and they did not also respond to the League of Minnesota City survey. So we just didn't have their information available. But we did have 21 communities that we were able to gather information from, and that's a very good number of communities for gathering the information. So when we collected information for the survey, we collected information for each position within the city and that's 32 positions are included in the report. During the process of the study, there were, you know, a couple of changes in positions. So we added some and we subtracted some as a part of the process. So we made a couple of changes as we went through the process for this study. But for each of those communities, we requested information on the starting wage for each of the positions, the top wage for each of those positions, the current wage, so we could see where their wages fell, because sometimes you see wages that actually fall outside of the range and we need to take that into consideration as we're analyzing that data. And then there's still some communities that just have an actual wage for some of their positions rather than an established range. It's not very common, but we still do see some positions that way. So we wanted to make sure we got a good reference of where the wages and the ranges fell for each position. When we collected the wages, when we gather all that information, we then do a very detailed analysis of that information. So we ensure that the data collected from the other communities is a match to the position within the city of Cannon Falls. So it has, you know, the same or similar job title, it has same or similar functions or responsibilities. So anything that's an outlier, for example, if you're looking at a position and most of the starting wages for a position fall in the, you know, thirty-eight to forty-two thousand range and the top are maybe, you know, fifty-five to fifty-nine, and then all of a sudden, there's a range that starts at sixty and goes to seventy-five, or one that starts at twenty-five and goes to thirty-two, we know that those are typically outliers and we'll pull that out so they don't skew our numbers. So we do do a very detailed position by position and data point by data point analysis. So in that analysis, if you look at the large spreadsheet, this is going to give you an overview of the information that was collected. And this is a summary of the information that we collected. So on this spreadsheet, all the way over to the left is going to be the, the position title of the position within the city of Cannon Falls. The next column is going to be the number of responses. Now, not every community provided a response to every position because every community is a little bit different in structure, a little bit different in services. So you're gonna see a variety of range of, of the number of responses that we received. The two that you see colored in blue with a DNU in front of them are positions that we did not use in the overall analysis, either because there was incomplete or inconsistent responses. Some of those that still have just one response, they're included in this just because they're positions that are not common and we just wanted to give you kind of a reference point for those communities that had them as far as a comparison. So the number of responses, again, ranges from one up to eighteen responses for each position. Then the next column is the average number of full-time equivalents, so the number of employees that they reported that they had in a position. For that data and also the next column, average years of service, not everybody provided that information, so it's really just informational purposes for your review. Then we get over into the salary information. The first column of that is average midpoint, and that's just simply the average middle of the range for each position. If we were moving onwards and looking at developing a compensation plan, that would be the data points that we would use for looking at developing kind of the overall structure of the, of the city's compensation plan. Then the next set of columns is looking at the minimum salaries and for each position, we have listed the minimum salary that was reported, the maximum salary, and then the average minimum wage for each position. Then midpoint salary, the lowest and the highest. And then for maximum salary, what was the lowest, the highest, and the average maximum salary reported for each position. Then moving over to the right on this spreadsheet, this is how the, the average salary range is in the marketplace compared to the current ranges within the city of Cannon Falls. So your current minimum for each position, then the dollar difference between that and the average minimum salary for that position, and then the percentage difference. And then the same for the midpoint and the maximum. Your current, the dollar difference from the average, and then the percentage difference. Now you'll see that there's an awful lot of red listed on that. The red means that you, where your salary is below the market average. But for some of these, they are very close to where the market is. Typical industry standards and guidelines for looking at relationships of salaries to the market are if a salary falls within five percent above or below, it's typically considered to be comparable and competitive with the market unless you have a pay philosophy that, you know, gives you some other relationships, such as a hundred and five percent or ninety-eight percent of the market. Most places wanna look at, you know, being somewhere around the average. So that five percent is a guideline. So you can see many positions fall within that even though they may be below the average. There are some positions that fall pretty significantly below the average, you know, over ten, over twenty, even a couple that are over thirty percent below the average when you're looking at the range. And that happens in organizations sometimes over time because market changes, position changes, and your system doesn't necessarily stay up with those changes, which is something that we'll talk about this evening as well. But that's looking at overall where you sit, are situated based on the market. If we look at on average where your compensation plan is relative to the market, and it's pretty much across the board, and even from minimum, midpoint, and maximum, that you're about six and a half percent below market. Most organizations are sometimes further off on one end or the other. You're very consistent in that your whole scale is about six and a half percent below the market. So that's looking at, at the market data. And I know it's a lot of numbers to look at, so maybe I'll pause for a moment and see if you have any questions, if you want me to go over anything in addition to, with those numbers.
Ron?
Ann, related to your point of the, the percentages, you know, you mentioned that some of them were close to thirty percent over. And I think, or under, I think it's important, when you talked about the number of respondents in the second column, for instance, a lot of those higher percentage that were under, there's only one, one or two people to compare to. There are, there are six, six employee categories here that have, five that have one person that was compared to in another organization and one that has two, two people.
Yep.
So we really have to look at, you know, that might be just an anomaly for the, whatever position, A in Lake City, for instance, might, that's also a position here might have totally two different functions, although maybe look similar, position description.
Yep. Yeah, and that's why I said earlier, you know, for those that have maybe one or two responses, those are kind of just for informational purposes at this point, not really for establishing what a wage would be for those, for those positions. You would wanna look further if you were going to make some decision about the compensation level of, was it really a match to the market? Where does it fit in relation to other positions within the organization? You know, such as, for example, a custodian here may just do, you know, some general cleaning, janitorial, those types of things. A custodian in another organization, even though it has the same job title, may, you know, work on the, you know, the HVAC system, may do some electrical work, may have a lot more responsibilities. So if you were gonna look at using this to make, you know, kind of detailed changes to different positions, you'd wanna look a little bit more closely at those that have few responses.
Anything else from anybody?
Okay. So kind of as part of the summary and something that, that Ron alluded to earlier, as we were kind of finishing up the analysis of just the market data, some of the conversations turned to the fact that you are kind of changing some of your positions and eliminating some positions and creating new positions. For example, the, the police supervisory position. The, the city currently uses the state job match as a job evaluation system. Job evaluation is something that is mandated by the State of Minnesota Local Government Pay Equity Act that you need to establish and maintain a job evaluation system for all positions within your organization. The state job match was actually put into use back in the mid eighties when pay equity was passed, and there have been no updates and no changes to that system since that time. So it's, it's kind of an antiquated system and it doesn't work very well. And the example that I'll use is something we talked about with the Personnel Committee earlier and that Ron and the Chief and I talked about as well is if you look at the state job match, they list positions kind of by, by work groupings in here. And when we went to say, look at what the benchmark points are for a lieutenant position, which is a position that, that we were talking about, the benchmark points under the system for a lieutenant position are four hundred and ten points, while the current points and the points listed in the state job match for a chief of police are three hundred and fifty-three. So the points for a lieutenant are higher, the points for a captain are higher, the points for a police sergeant are the same as a chief of police. So if we start to look at where should we place this position, there is no logical way to establish points for a lieutenant position using the state job match. You know, you'd have to say, well, it's gonna fall somewhere in between the police officer and the chief of police and, you know, it would be kind of like having a dartboard and throwing a dart and saying, okay, that's where it fits. So the city doesn't really have any useful way to establish job values for either new or changed positions within the organization. So then you have problems as to where they would then fit in your current compensation plan because there's no way to kind of establish where they should fit. So that was one of the issues that we started to talk about as we got done with this market survey, especially because you have some positions that are unique to the organization, so we don't have market data with which to say, this is where that position should be paid because there's only one or two in other communities. Well typically, determining where they'll be placed in your compensation plan is then based on internal relationships, which is the job evaluation points for positions. And if you don't have a valid resource for evaluating those positions, it becomes difficult to determine where they should placed and to, you know, be able to justify the placement for that position.
That's the reason that we brought that off tonight.
So where do we go?
Where do you go? Typically, when organizations find themselves in, in this situation, they move forward and they, they look at changing their system. So they look at adopting a new job evaluation system, a new compensation plan that will work for, you know, the city today, but will also work for the city moving forward. So if you have new positions, positions change. You have the ability to accurately evaluate the positions that have a compensation plan where your positions fit.
And what does that do to the ones that were supposed to be following?
You, you adopt a new system. So the, the state job match would go away and you would adopt a new job evaluation.
We don't have to follow that?
No. Actually, the law says you need to establish and maintain an up-to-date system. And so since this is, this system is about thirty years old, it's really not very up-to-date anymore.
And we can do our own? We can sit down and say, this position gets this many points and this position gets that many points?
No, you have to use an established job evaluation system.
And where do we find that?
There's many out there to be found. We have one, Hay has one, there's, there's all sorts of different job evaluation systems out there.
There's, there's quite a few. And looking at her summary on the last page there, I think we should consider the, the Personnel Committee this evening decided that we feel that we should look at a, conducting a classification study, which is going to review all of the job descriptions and develop that new compensation plan to get us within that 3% to 5% range so that we're not above or beyond, you know, below or, or above where, where the market is. That should keep us in that point. That way, we've got a new system and we can keep it going forward and have something to work with that's going to work. Just, you know, just with this one position that shows how messed up the current plan is. And talking with Ann, it's, it's, I think would be probably somewhere in the range between $10,000 and $15,000 to get this done. But it'll put us back on track to where the city needs to be with that to give us the opportunity to, to look at the supervisor position and, and work on getting that finalized here in the next month or so so that we can decide exactly where that person's going to fall.
Right. And I think one of the things if we would move forward with a more comprehensive compensation study is part of what Ann's group would do is they would actually come down here and conduct interviews with both staff and, and the rank and file and help determine what they do on their jobs, where, where they should be ordered and, and so on.
Anybody else got any other questions? Comments?
I've been through those before and I never liked them.
They're not, they're not always, they're not always fun.
No.
But, and, and it's, it's a lot of work, not only on staff, but it's a lot of work for the company when they come in and start looking at everything. I mean, basically starting from scratch, what you're going to do is you're going to take your old job description and you're going to start from scratch and move right on up the line with it as, you know, is this still part of your position? Is this part of your position? What are you doing now that you are no longer doing in this current job position? So there's a lot of things that come into play and then, and then you can get a good credible weight on where people should be put in the scale. And then that scale can be developed to where it's comparable to, to everybody else and make it equitable.
And I think it's further important because with our union contracts with the, the police and public works, they have the option in their contracts to reopen salary talks. And, you know, this market study was supposed to be part of that. And this way, we can get ahead of the curve, start working on it so that when we do go back to negotiating with the unions that they reopen, we, we have a solid basis on which to discuss.
And we do involve staff at every level when we do our studies and we have, you know, big informational meetings. And we always invite the union reps to attend those meetings as well. So they get the same information that, that the employees that they represent get as well.
And that, the request from both of those unions has come forward to reopen for wages. And this study would not be done by the time we're ready to negotiate for 2016 wages. But at least the, if you would approve the, the, to do a, move forward with the full compensation study, then at least they're, they're aware of that. And, you know, this is public information. They'll have this information tonight too. And they can see that, you know, for the most part, we're actually, you know, we're, overall at 6.32, if we're to stay within a 5%. And there's some real strange things with just single employee classifications here that go on. You know, I think we'll still probably have to negotiate with them. But I look at this as the, typically, city's budget is made up of general fund budget or any budget, actually, is mostly general fund, is 60% to 70% personnel. And if the backbone of that system that you're using for wages is kind of broken, it's kind of tough to work with. I had a situation this morning, for instance, that an employee that was at a grade five prior to the new revised system being placed, put in place in 2010, is actually, was, she was placed at a grade six with the new study. So she was at a five, new, new study put her at a six. And the top end scale is actually, the employee would be making $4,000 less as a step grade six than a grade five. So it's, it's a, it's a kind of a bearcat of a system to work with.
Any further discussion? Well, I mean, I'll take a motion if, if the council wants to move forward with this.
I'll second it.
Well, I can't do the motion.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to move ahead with the compensation study.
We have a motion by Rod.
And I will second that.
Second by Bill to move ahead with the new compensation study. Is there anything we need to add to that?
Couple of different ways you could do that. And one is to request a proposal from Springstead solely. I've been involved with others where we've, most recently in Lake City, we did, we called for proposals and, and Springstead was the low proposal. I mean, there are others that are out there. They're familiar with our system. I know they'd be reasonable with the proposal. If we were looking at more than, you know, the $15,000 range, I think we'd be looking at doing something else. But that would be an option. Either you could have staff call for proposals or you could request a, submit a proposal from Springstead and we could bring that forward to you.
Want to revise that?
I think we can just stick with these guys. You know, have Springstead bring, bring forward. And if we feel it's out of line, we can always say no.
So the motion has been remanded to do, to, to move forward with the study, moving ahead with Springstead to bring us a proposal for the study that Ron can bring to us at the next meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thanks, Ann.
My pleasure.
Thanks for all your work on this other study.
You're welcome.
All right, this moves us on to reports. Mr. Maroney. Chief?
Well, before we know it, summer will be over, believe it or not. We're zooming towards Labor Day weekend. I won't have a, much of a chance to, to remind people of that before, before it gets here. We will have one more council meeting. But I just want to remind people that, you know, as we get into that, towards zero death, we'll be focusing on impaired drivers. You know, our, our community is very fortunate to have, you know, some sober ride services and people to plan ahead. But remember, don't drink and drive. That's all I have.
Ron?
I have nothing.
No?
Nothing, thank you.
Merle?
Nothing.
Nothing.
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
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 Like Chief was saying, the, end of summer, especially for our school kids, will be coming to an end here before, about the time we meet again, they start back to school the day after Labor Day. So just as a heads up, be watching for those folks. And I have nothing other than that. Just time, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.